Liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Crouch.
Yes, sir.
Item 191, the previous meeting.
Mr. President.
Mr. Cunningham.
I make a motion to approve the minutes as well as the executive session certification as presented.
Motion by Mr. Cunningham, do we have a second?
I'll second.
And by Mrs. Miller. Any comments or discussion regarding previous minutes? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 192, approval of fuel and oil bids. Ms. McKenzie.
I'll defer to Mrs. Townsend.
Okay, so Dawson Enterprises is our current supplier of fuel, gasoline and oil, and they are the only ones who provided us with a bid this year, although we did submit it to two or three others. So, they did hold their prices on diesel fuel and gasoline, they did increase a little bit on oil products, but I'm still recommending that we, that you approve their quote, please, effective September first.
Okay. What's the board's pleasure?
Mr. President.
Mr. Crouch.
I make a motion to approve the fuel and oil bid as presented, please.
I have a motion by Mr. Crouch, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Freitas. Any comments or discussion regarding the fuel and oil bid? All right, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, 193, permission to advertise the 2019 capital, or budget capital, budget capital asset plan and budget replacement plan. Ms. Townsend, please.
Yes, tonight is the night I ask permission to notify the public of our public hearing, which is scheduled for October 1st, 2018, which is our next board meeting. That notification will, there is just down to a two-page notification now in the Chronicle and it'll be in the Journal Tribune this year. And then it'll be placed on our website, our capital assets plan, it's no longer called capital projects plan, it's now called capital assets plan, as we went over in my budget workshop. Also, our bus replacement fund, which is now in the operations fund, but it is now down to a five-year plan, it was 12-year plan. So, all that will be posted on our website, it will be posted on Gateway, and the two pieces of notifications will be placed in the two newspapers. So, tonight I'm asking you to give me permission to publicize for the public hearing.
All right, thank you, Ms. Townsend. What's the board's pleasure?
Mr. President.
Mr. Gaskin.
I make a motion to accept the business manager's permission to advertise the budget as presented.
Motion by Mr. Gaskin, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Miller. Any comments or discussion regarding the budget planning process and advertising? Not seeing any, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 194, resolution to reduce appropriations in either 218 or 219. Ms. Townsend.
All right, this is the first of five resolutions I'm gonna ask for you to pass tonight, and this, what this one does is, and you've never seen this before, but our budgets are built on an 18-month basis. So, it's the last six months of 2018 appropriations, as well as all of the calendar year of 2019. So, what this will allow me to do is reduce either the unused appropriations in 2018, or reduce 2019 appropriations, because as you know, our enrollment has decreased, which is leading to a decrease in funding. So, I wanna be able to use both of those budgets in order to get to where we need to be when it comes time to get our budget approved with the Department of Local Government Finance. So, this first resolution will give me the authority to reduce either one of those budgets accordingly.
Okay, thank you. What's the board's pleasure?
I just have a question, has the date been here yet where we do our count?
That was Friday.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Mr. Crouch.
I make a motion to approve the resolution to reduce the appropriations in either 2018 or in 2019.
All right, I have a motion by Mr. Crouch, do we have a second? Second by Mr. Smith. Any comments or discussion regarding this resolution? Okay, not seeing any, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 195, resolution to establish the education and operations funds. Ms. Townsend.
The general fund is going to the educate, going to be called the education fund, and the capital projects, bus replacement and transportation fund, and the piece of general fund that does not belong into the classroom will all move to what is called the operations fund. That is established as of January 1st, 2019. So, tonight I'm asking you to pass the resolution to establish the education and the operations fund.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gaskin.
I recommend that we establish the new education operations fund as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Gaskin, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Miller. Any comments or discussion regarding the resolution to establish the new funds? All right, not seeing any, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 196, resolution to transfer general fund balance to the educational fund on January 1st, 2019. Ms. Townsend.
That is correct, now, but we've established the funds, we have to fund the funds. So, I'm asking, for this resolution will allow me to transfer our general fund cash balance to the education fund on January 1st.
What's the board's, Mr. Gaskin?
Yeah? See if I can get this down. I make a motion to accept the business manager's recommendation to transfer the general fund balance into the education fund, January 1st, did I get it?
Yep.
Yep.
I have a motion by Mr. Gaskin, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Freitas. Any comments or discussion regarding this transfer? Okay, not seeing any, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, 197, resolution to transfer capital projects, transportation and bus replacement balance to the operations fund, effective January 1st, 2019.
That is correct, this resolution will allow me to transfer any cash that is left in the capital projects, transportation and bus replacement fund to the operations fund.
What's the board's pleasure?
Mr. President.
Mrs. Freitas.
I move that we accept this resolution to make these capital fund, transportation and bus replacement to the operations fund by January 1st, 2019.
I accept, I'll second that.
Motion by Mrs. Freitas, second by Mr. Gaskin, any comments or discussion regarding this transfer of funds? All right, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 198, resolution to transfer the amount from education to operations fund as of January 1st, 2019. Ms. Townsend.
This resolution states that you as a board understand that not all of the general fund will fund the education fund, part of that has to be transferred into the operations fund. And that piece is what is funds, what does not go into the classroom, so that's what the operations fund is all about as well. So, this, this fund, or this resolution will allow me to make that transfer, and I determined, as you might recall in our budget workshop, that I felt like about 22% of our cash was responsible for the operations fund. So, I figured, figured that amount to be $313,550. So, at this time, that's the amount I plan to transfer, but please understand that as we get closer to January, I have until March 1st to actually make that transfer, so that amount might, might change, and I may need to come back and ask you to reestablish another one. But at least this gets, gets me through the budget process and allows DLGF to understand that we recognize this and make a smoother transition. So, that's what this resolution's all about, and I ask you to pass it tonight, please.
Okay, thank you. What's the board's pleasure?
Mr. President.
Mrs. Miller.
I'll make a motion that we accept the resolution to transfer funds from the education fund to the operations fund.
Motion by Mrs. Miller, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith, any comments or discussion regarding this transfer of funds? Okay, not seeing any, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 199, e-learning day presentation. Ms. McKenzie.
Yes, our first e-learning day for Mrs. Sennowall Community Schools is approaching quickly. It will be Friday, September 28th, so we're less than two weeks away. I've said it before and I'll say it again, I appreciate so much the work that's gone into organizing this and preparing for this day, and not only preparing for this day, but in my mind, this is kind of a trial run, it's planned, it's a planned educational day. But it's a trial run for future e-learning days that might be in the context of emergency situations or cancellations of school. And so, it's a good trial run, it's also gonna be a great professional development opportunity for our staff. I appreciate Mrs. Winter's work and the principal's work, and the teachers that have served on those committees that helped put these plans together. Mrs. Winter provided to you before the meeting, kind of a general, general summary of what's gonna happen at each grade level, elementary, middle school, high school. But keep in mind that an e-learning day is not the same experience as if the students were in school. It's not gonna rise to that level of quality. I want to think as a former teacher myself, that we can't easily be replaced as teachers with technology. But technology shouldn't be seen as a replacement for teaching, it should be used and thought of as a resource to facilitate learning outside the traditional calendar, and outside the traditional school day, and outside the traditional school physical facility. And that's what this is, that's what we've been doing in summer school. I feel like we've done a good job of communicating, I know all our principals have met with all their staff and had teacher meetings to discuss the e-learning day. I know that they've sent out written documentation to the homes of all the elementary students and mailed that information with the midterm grades to the secondary students. I know they'll be talking to their students and staff more about it before they get to that point. This week, on Wednesday, we, we plan to send out email messages to all the email addresses that we have, to all the parents and to each building staff, and to the students of the middle school and high school, send out email messages. Again, reminding them of the e-learning day and the expectations for that educationally. And then I will do a global connect, a blackboard message a week from this coming Wednesday, the 26th, the Wednesday before the Friday of the e-learning day. So, I feel like we've done a pretty good job of communicating and plan, I know we've done a great job planning and organizing, and so I'll let Mrs. Winter talk a little bit more about that.
I think, Mr. McKenzie, we've covered everything. What we shared with you is what we're sending to the parents and guardians, and also a schedule of what our staff gets to choose from. It's the same format as when we go to a conference, they have choice on, on what they wanna attend. And then we're very fortunate to be able to have a couple really top-notch presenters from Apple be with us that day, and we're excited to have that opportunity. Before I answer any questions, I do wanna share with you the names of the people that have spent countless hours preparing this. When we started this process in the spring, our hope was to create an environment that would make teachers feel like this didn't deter from their regular planning of curriculum. And to prepare materials to support them in the overall goals of what we were trying to achieve at each grade level. And as you can see in the secondary level, digital citizenship is extremely important at that level. So, we are really focusing with the secondary on digital citizenship, what your footprint looks like in the digital world. And we feel like those are things that are gonna help us tremendously as we move forward in our safety plan, as we move forward in our helping relationship plans. And I think that's an extraordinary opportunity to work with, with students as well as teachers in that area. But the committee consisted of Mr. Felger, Mrs. Rumpel, Mrs. Skeens, Mrs. Bader, Mr. Fleming, Mrs. Lockwood, Mrs. Eckstein, Mr. Quaterer and Mr. Smith. And as you can see, they were very thorough in what they put together, and I know that when it was presented to the teachers, at least at the buildings, I was there when they did the presentation, the teachers were really excited once they actually saw how we were approaching parents and students of all the possibilities that could happen in the future. We have already met twice on what that could look like on an unscheduled e-learning day. And our hope is that we keep that same philosophy of what are things that we do with students that move our entire corporation forward in two things, student achievement and student opportunities. And I think that the teachers are excited, we're gonna survey the teachers and the students at the end of the e-learning day to ask for what, it's about four questions. What did you like about the e-learning day? What would you like to see different? Give us, write down what you would like to see different. Were you satisfied with the opportunities to contact your teacher, and any suggestions that you could give us to make this better? And then we'll, we will send those back out to the faculty, and we're also asking anybody else who would like to serve on those committees. So, any questions that you might have for any of us that were on the committee, please feel free to ask.
Any questions from the board? Thank you. Go ahead, Smith.
I've had experience, I got, I got grandkids, and they've been to my house, and they bring their stuff, they've got a setup December, so, and that's, and my daughter works with this thing, and they use it several times in Logan's Board, and they're, they're pretty satisfied with the results, so I think, I don't think they lose a lot. And they do want them as a, for teachers to get together, that's why they have schedules like this is done, so, I think it's a good plan, have to see what works. Thanks for everybody's help.
Yep. Anybody else? Thank you, Leslie. All right, we'll move on. Item 200, approval of the FAA, or FFA.
Future Farmers of America. Who had ever, ever thought that we would be talking about the future farmers of America, Mrs. Sennowall. I, I took the liberty after school today, was let out, and I went down to the high school, and I looked up three old powwows to see if there had ever been future farmers of America. I looked up 1950, 1955 and 1960. I figured if it didn't happen by 1960, it probably didn't happen. And so, to my knowledge, at least at Mrs. Sennowall, now, if there was one at Gas City or Jonesburg before 1950, that is a possibility, but I didn't feel like doing that level of research. So, I was satisfied with thinking that Mrs. Sennowall's never had a future farmers of America. Now, they haven't had FHA, Future Homemakers of America, and I said something to Mr. Quaterer that they may wanna explore that. Of course, you could, when I looked at the pictures of FHA, it was all ladies, so we'd have to, we'd have to integrate if that happened. But anyway, future farmers of America, farming is high-tech, and it's, it falls under the auspice of vocational tech. And Mr. Cruz is with us this evening, he's our assistant principal, one of our assistant principals at the high school, and also teaches the ag courses out at the high school. And this would be a club, an after-school club, an organization that would be tied in with the agricultural curriculum that we now have at the high school. So, I'll ask Mr. Cruz to step up to the microphone and make any comments he might wanna make about FFA. But I would like for the board to approve creating this organization, so.
Yeah, thank you first and foremost for, you know, allowing us to have an agricultural program, a non-agricultural setting, and now to consider doing that, moving forward with the FFA. I've been tied in with the FFA, I've been an FFA advisor for 13 years prior to coming here, so I kinda know the, the organization inside now. It's, right now, it's the world's largest youth organization, over 500,000 members. Kinda right now, where, where I'm kinda looking is, we have about 110 students in agricultural classes now. I'm looking for about 10 to 20% of the students to, to kinda first start, so I'm looking 15 to 20 students in the organization. There's no upfront fees, I've already read the constitution, the bylaws, it's, it's all ready to go, I'm thinking honestly by the end of September, if, if we get approved tonight, that we could actually have the club up and, up and going. As far as for the students, there is a $20 fee per year for their membership. Once we get Treasury up and going and do some fundraising and things like that, that we would have to come back, come back to, for your approval. I'm hoping that we could do this to where it'd be no cost to the students, or where we could pick up the, the cost for that. It's a great organization. I, I think that students are wanting to be involved and, and wanting another type of outlet, and this is another outlet. And maybe some of our students that chose to go to Eastbrook or Oak Hill, now that we have an FFA organization, we're tied in with those as well. And we would still, and we would be competing against them as well, which I would kinda love to, love to do. So, if you guys have any questions, I'd be more than welcome to entertain them, and I do wanna thank you for the consideration of this.
What kind of competition do you actually do?
Oh, there's, there's all kinds, there's over 150-some competitions, anything from soils judging, livestock, horse judging, meat judging. There are career development events, job interview contests, basically, you name it, we, we basically have a contest for it. And there are big scholarships that go along with it, everything from $100 scholarship to full rides, anywhere the, anywhere that you want. They have agri-science fairs, which helps fit in with science classes. There's technology, national convention is getting ready to come up now where kids get to go down, and it's, it's, it's a very large, it takes up all downtown Indianapolis. And they have places where they can also have fun as well, they're actually bringing Garth Brooks in for one of the concerts this year and things like that. So, it's, it's not something that, you know, a few hundred people get together, we're talking 50,000 students and another 20 to 30,000 adults get together. So, it's a great organization, and basically, the, the sky's kinda the limit. It's very, it is very labor-intensive, but the students pick up that leg, a lot of that legwork, because that's part of being in the organization is, you, you do the work, I'm there to help guide you.
Anybody have any questions?
I'm gonna say, so you're the thing, you intend to get them down to Indianapolis this year?
Not this year, we're already past the registration, generally, registration is the first week in August for, for the national convention, which is the last week in October. But I, I think that we can have the, the national charter and the state charter by the end of this month, and getting kids enrolled and, and excited about it, and, and be able to do the, the winter competitions by then.
I'd like if you, if you, I assume you probably will get it up, but when you get organized, if you bring some of them back and have them let's meet them, especially, you know, it'd be nice to.
Absolutely.
Since we've never done it before.
Do girls participate now?
Absolutely. Yeah, actually, there are more girls in FFA now than there are, than there are boys, which is probably better because they're better leaders than, than most of the boys are anyway, but.
You had to say that with.
It's, it's, it's kinda the truth.
Mr. Smith, did you get that? You might wanna make sure.
And that's, that's been my experience in the, in the past too, but yeah, it's, it's open to males, females, any race, ethnicity, anything. And, and very open and diverse, and that's what, that's one of the pillars, it used to be, you had to be a white male in order to be an FFA, and then we've come, we've come a long way, especially since the 1980s.
Anybody else?
No.
Well, I've spoken to, at national convention, they usually have a booth, and I've spoken to them several times, and it's come a long way, like, they might, if their, school isn't near the ocean, they might study fish farming, or. I mean, they really adapt it to what, where their environment is, and I think it's wonderful, 'cause I think if a kid can make one good, strong, positive connection at school, it can make a difference. And this maybe appeals to some kids that don't like much else of what we have on.
Yeah, and, and I'm not trying to shoot for all 100 of my kids to be in, in FFA, I wanna get a reasonable number and then start, kids do word of mouth, and they're, they're the best salesman on it.
I wanted to add something, Mr. Cruz, Mr. Burbank and Mrs. Varner and Mr. Rash have been working on, all summer, on developing a after-school program that's K through 12 comprehensive for students and club sponsors to be able to have guidance in what is competitive clubs, what are nine competitors? We, we're going to bring that to you the middle of October, but he is under some timeframes that this needed to be approved for us to be able to move forward in the charter. But they worked hard all summer long in organizing this, studying the different type of academic competitions at every level that would articulate into success for, for a wide variety of students. And they, they have done an extraordinary job, and I think you're gonna be very impressed with the work that they've done. So, they will be coming to you with a lot more clubs to approve, and we hope to create a, and this was their idea, not mine, but we hope to create a program in the spring where we hold fairs on the different types of after-school programming that's available, and invite parents and kids to come in and sample. I hate to even go public with it in case we don't get that far along, but that's our goal, and we are extremely excited on the opportunities and the diverse opportunities that our students are gonna have.
Yep, I will entertain a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz.
Mr. President.
Mr. Cunningham.
I make a motion to approve the FFA organizational charter and beginning the process for this.
I'll second that.
A motion by Mr. Cunningham, and second by Mr. Gaskin, any additional comments or discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Good to go. Okay, item 201, personnel, Ms. McKenzie.
Yes, we have the following personnel items for the board's consideration this evening. Sandy Bryant will retire as a bus driver effective September 21st. Jessica Fromholz-Smith has resigned as the middle school science Olympiad coach for this school year, effective immediately. Tiffany Hee Hee, a high school English teacher, has requested a leave of absence beginning October 8th, and she plans on returning on December 7th. Tierra Rumpel, a paraprofessional in special ed preschool, has requested a leave of absence beginning approximately November 1 and returning on January 7th. In addition, we have four new hires for your consideration. Holly Huffman to be hired as a preschool teacher at Westview Elementary, effective immediately. Erin Blakely to be hired as a paraprofessional at RJ Basket Middle School, effective August 28th. Justin Fugate to be hired as a paraprofessional at Westview Elementary, effective August 20th. Angela Trees to be hired as a cook's assistant at Northview Elementary, effective September 17th. We would recommend approval of these personnel items as presented this evening.
Thank you, Ms. McKenzie, what's the board's pleasure?
Mr. President.
Mr. Gaskin.
I make, I make a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation on personnel as presented.
Motion by Mr. Gaskin, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Crouch. Any comments or discussion regarding personnel? All right, not hearing any, all those in favor signify. All right, not hearing any, all those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Line item two oh two, conference request, Mr. McKenzie.
Yes, we have the following conference requests for your consideration this evening. Katie Krebda, Michelle Martin, Shelby Rodriguez, Brianna Elkins, Liz Strong, Janelle McDaniel, Jennifer Sands, Maida Smith, and Tierra Rumpel to attend Tuning Into Our Youngest Learners, Understanding the Impact of Trauma, which was on September fifteenth, at a cost of two hundred and twenty-five dollars, and it was paid from the kindergarten readiness program funds. Teresa Francis and Shannon Nyverson to attend the PTO Live Expo in Indianapolis on September twenty-fifth, at no cost to the corporation. Heather Mauer, Cassidy Weiss, and Jacob Felger to attend the IXL Learning Conference on October thirtieth, at a cost of two hundred and fifty-five dollars, and it'll be paid from the RJ Basket travel account. And we would recommend approval of the conference request as presented this evening.
Thank you, Ms. McKenzie, it was the board's pleasure.
Mr. President.
Mr. Smith.
I'm going to approve the conference request.
Motion by Mr. Smith, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaskin. Any comments or discussion regarding the conference request? All right, not hearing any, all those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item two oh three, facilities report, Ms. McKenzie.
Yes, we placed in your board packet for this week, um, an update on the summer maintenance projects for each building and, and for the corporation. Uh, as you can see, uh, these projects are pretty much finished. There's a couple of exceptions, uh, the handrails at the Upper Bleachers at the high school, uh, we had a PO written up on that, and, and, uh, we've been in communication with them, uh, that we need that done by November first. So I know that Mr. Gasser attempted to talk to them to- today, but, um, anything to add?
Sometime in the box over.
So, uh, for the most part, just about everything's done and paid for at this point, so. Are there any questions you specifically have? I noticed that we went about sixteen thousand five hundred dollars over our estimate, but keep in mind that that original estimate did not include the handrails a- at the high school for the Upper Bleachers, and that was thirty-six thousand or s- yeah, thirty-six thousand five hundred. So, uh, we were really close to, to where we thought we'd be, and so.
Very good.
Uh, I will add, uh, that, uh, I had Mr. Gasser, uh, look into, uh, safety glass for our exterior doors around, uh, uh, entrances and exits, exits where somebody could break the glass and, 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 uh, unlock the door by reaching through, and so, um, him and I worked together on identifying those at each building where that needed to take place, safety glass plus film, to reinforce that glass on the back. I think I might have already told you that, uh, we did a sample on that glass and found that we didn't even break through on, on that glass, but, uh, after a few minutes of trying to do that, and I think that that, you know, it was three or four minutes, uh, that would buy us enough time to alert our, uh, police force and our security officer, uh, to get on the scene and, and to support that situation, so, uh, but I wanted to tell you that bid was thirty-eight thousand dollars. So, Mrs. Townsend has been looking at our capital projects funds, uh, throughout the end of this present calendar year, and, um, if we have the funding in place, uh, to cover that, we're gonna go ahead with that project if, if you're supportive of that. If not, we'll wait till after January first, maybe, to do that, so.
Is that a recommendation for tonight, or?
Uh, wasn't planning on that, but.
I'm gonna like to wait.
I- i- if you feel like I need a vote for that, then let's go ahead and do it, if you're supportive of that, because.
Why don't we, why don't we just wait and see if there's any other discussion, we have.
Okay. Any other, uh, yeah, any other questions or comments about any of the buildings or, for the summer maintenance?
Anybody? Okay, we will move on. Item two oh four, legislative update, Mr. Cunningham.
Yes, Mr. President, I, um, Pam was gracious enough to, um, download to Google Drive the recent minutes from the Education Study Committee. Um, I think it's about three or four pages long, but, um, basically the committee heard testimony on the adequacy of current state and local funding for school corporations, uh, for career counseling of students, the current workload of school corporations' career counselors, the impact of having multiple graduation pathways on school corporations', career counselors' workload, and then the fiscal impact of having multiple graduation pathways, uh, on the school corporations. You'll see, uh, various school corporations that testified or, um, I guess testified's not the right word, cause they're, they're really just offering information, um, for a legislative committee to hear. And they'll, um, uh, they have another meeting that's scheduled for October fourth, and as soon as I get the minutes for that, I'll share that, but read through that if you have any questions, um, or I can get you, um, uh, additional information, that's the charge of the committee that was originally given, and then, um, I believe October fourth may be their last meeting before they produce a final report, and then I'll obviously get that to share with us as well, so, that's all I have, sir.
All right, thank you, sir, appreciate it. Any questions for Chris?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
When we were at the conference, we heard a lot about pathways. I mean, that was one of the things, and we know it's coming, but were there six possible pathways?
Yes.
And you pick what you want to offer at your s- what you're able to offer at your school?
Yes.
And then they, are, is the curriculum prescribed then, once you go on a pathway, you take this, this, and this?
Well, there actually are more than, than six pathways, there are six general areas that can have me- many pathways. You also have the option of creating local, creating pathways. Um, we've been working on it a couple of years. This year's eighth, eighth grade class will be the first class that will actually determine a pathway. Um, we do have our freshmen, um, even though we have not had them determine what pathway they're in, we are educating them right now on what that would look like. Um, we also are, uh, uh, in the third year of a six-year process of early college high school, I believe there maybe are ten in the state of Indiana that helps create that early college and career pathway. Um, we have, we've been working extremely hard, um, our goal is to have those completely, uh, finished by November the first. We approached it a tad bit different, this has been being discussed for a couple of years at the, uh, state level. We knew that it was bec- going to become a very important, uh, part of graduation. What we have found in the past that these mandates really do not give you new money, so you have to be able to, be able to have the staff to be able to offer these. Um, as you can see in our curriculum, we came to you with a lot of offerings in CTE courses, uh, dual-credit courses, and all of those were developed to fit in to these pathways.
Now, what's it, like, the college bound pathway called? Is it like college prep, or is there another, how does that work, the names?
They really don't, they, they, you don't really say college, every, they, they want everyone to be preparing for post-secondary training, whether that be going to college, whether that be going into, um, industry certification. Uh, the three areas are work-based, service-based, and project-based. Right now, we have eleven students that we actually take to Ivy Tech in the Maintenance Technology Certification Program. Um, we also have two students in the senior class that, if everything's successful, will, will be our first two that graduates in our, on, in our pilot early college, because it's a very rigorous process, it's a six-year progress to be approved. Um, that will be our first two that will graduate with a, um, certificate from Ivy Tech of General Studies and a high school diploma, um, so.
I guess I was trying to figure out if it's something new or just new names for something old.
It's really, it's really new.
Okay.
Now, let me clarify that. It's, it's, what they're doing is they're bringing back more, more training in, um, technical areas, because we found out that not everyone, uh, should be trying to attain a college degree. And we are extremely excited about it for our students and the opportunities that, um, will present itself. But it is very tricky to be able to offer a diverse group of opportunities because you, licensing, teacher licensing is so important. That's why we had, um, probably sixty teachers this summer attending different trainings, everything from, um, dual-credit certification to project lead-the-way certification. We're preparing a list for you, um, of, of that right now, we wanted to get all the, the dollar amounts that went along with that, and our faculty just is doing an extraordinary job, uh, working, uh, toward that. Um, we have a committee that meets weekly that, um, has middle school and high school, because we believe for this to be successful, we have to start educating sixth, seventh graders, and by eighth grade, we need to help them, uh, make some of those choices. Now, our philosophy is everything's blended, that if a student decides at tenth grade, that really isn't what I wanna do, then we will have a blended pathway for them, so they still meet the requirements to get a high school diploma. So, we're, we're, we're gonna be excited to share that with us, ju- with you, just be patient with us as, as we work through that. Um, we've been real, we're working really hard on building those relationships with the business, we have, um, four inter- that are actually doing internships, and we are up to thirty-four in our, uh, work-based program, which we call ICE. Uh, in fact, Mr. McKenzie and I are trying to decide how we're gonna staff that, because the requirements of visiting the students on the job, which means most of these students are working in the evenings, that we pretty well ran that teacher ragged. Uh, we've had one company in Grant County said they, they would take ten more students if we had them. And these are kids who this can articulate into a, a great job, a career job. Um, Mr. Quater and I receive every Friday our students that are, um, working in the, the, um, certification program at, uh, Ivy Tech on how they're doing, and, and, uh, every once in a while, we have to give a few angels a little push, but you would be, it's very uplifting to hear what a college professor is saying about our students. Um, and, uh, there are four or five businesses, and we're gonna have a couple of the kids come to talk to you second semester about it, but there are four or five businesses, um, that are actually going to hire students from this class, and I think the minimum starting pay was eighteen dollars an hour. Uh, now, we're not the only school system there, there are, uh, two other school systems that are sending students into this program also, so. Um, we, we met just this week over an early childhood program, which would become a career pathway, it would be education, but, you know, they would have branches of education where someone could really attain their paraprofessional certificate before they graduate from high school if you meet that age requirements. Um, we have an eighth grade class now that is actually doing cadet teaching at Westview in the preschool program. So, we, we are excited about, um, we're not excited about the standardized test of the new graduation requirements, because it still is not fair, but we're very excited about the opportunities that kids are gonna have to become passionate about different things that will give them success, other than going into a four-year university.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, 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 I'm thinking tech prep, that you, you know, the other teachers on the board and other people in the audience might remember, I know I certainly remember it. I, I feel like the difference is that, uh, this vocational certification movement, uh, reaches beyond the school walls, where tech prep was something internal. Uh, this is a, a, a lot of collaboration and a lot of networking with vocational institutions outside and with businesses outside the school walls. And, and it's an attempt to, uh, create a, an academic and vocational niche for every student. And, uh, so, uh, we're, I, there's a lot of thought and planning that's gone into all this, and some of it's already operational, and some decisions are close to being made, uh, for future, uh, uh, programs. And, uh, as soon as we get that nailed down, uh, we'll come back to you and, and share those with you. Thank you, Mrs. Winter.
Let me ask you real quick, and Chad's here, so it's perfect. Last year, we had zero Ag students, this year, we have a hundred and ten. So, what, what Leslie's saying is we're increasing those opportunities, but we also have five ways to staff those opportunities. How many? Unfortunately, Chad has the latitude that he does, the passion that he does, but we, you know, two years ago, if you would've said we were gonna have another bad, say, there's no way, we don't have, there's no need, there's no, but, but somebody like Chad has now presented an opportunity for our kids to have options. Uh, Leslie hit on that earlier, that's really, really important for our students, all eight hundred and seventeen of them to have options, cause they're all individual. Uh, we really try to be inclusive, and, and again, we benefit from that K, K through twelve philosophy where we, Jamie and I can work together to make this process as simple and as easy for the students and families, but Chad's, Chad's class is a perfect example of kind of the direction we're going, and there's a need for it. You know, last year, we had zero Ag students, this year, his classes are literally busting with students.
We also have thirty-two students taking a CNA program, it's two periods a day in the morning, and they will, uh, receive nine dual-credit hours from Ivy Tech, and if they pass the test in November, they will actually be certified as CNA, uh, students. And, um, uh, the instructor shared with Mr. Quater and I that, that they were getting a little nervous, cause it's pretty rigorous. So, we went over and, and gave them a, a pep talk and had them write to us in a paragraph what they were nervous about, and then we responded back to them in writing, but we took it a step further. We, we, we are developing a program with, uh, relationship with IWU's pro-program, which supports building nursing in Grant County, and so, some of our students are gonna be receiving a college student that's in their third or fourth year of nursing to help tutor them for that, and how we approached it with our students are, if you fail that test, we're not done with you. We're gonna build this relationship with the tutor second semester, and you're gonna get to take that test again at the end of that semester, and if you don't pass at that time, and you're still coming back in the fall, we're gonna work again at it, and, um, so, we're, we are really, I think you're gonna be really pleased with the work that, um, that we're doing in that area. And, uh, but I'm gonna be honest, if, we do make some mistakes. Um, uh, you know, we're, we're starting to see that, you know, that it takes a lot of supervision from three till, we hope they're off work by, by ten, it's not, it's not always the case, but that's taking a lot of work of personnel in the evening, so we have to, we have to rethink what that workday may look like for a teacher that's helped doing this, because you, you only have so many hours in the day, and you have to be able to sleep and, and spend time with your family, so. Um, we're not perfect at it yet, and I'm just thankful that we got good people working with us as we work through this kind of a non-traditional approach to, um, education.
Mr. President.
Mr. Cunningham.
Just to bring this back on, the education study committee part of that. One of the concerns that's mentioned and several people gave testimony was that these pathways, is that certification and education being primary? So, if, it, as you, as you offer these pathways, how important it is that the staff have the certifications and have the educational background to do all that? So, that's for smaller corporations, being able to build the infrastructure so that if you lose a teacher and he moves on or she moves on to something else, you're now bereft of that pathway because you don't have that certified teacher and certification. So, I guess, I guess that's the, the thing that I see coming with that part of it is that we're going to have to shift this paradigm that we have for, for education in that not only how we pay, but how we, how we train, but how we pay people based upon their certification and what they have. Because the pathways are going to guide what happens. So, you can no longer look at this position has three years and we're paying this, and that's across the board. You've got to look at based upon what certifications that people have and look at creating ways to be able to pay those people, to keep those people. Because if you don't, the, the, now you've got a whole class that you can't meet in those pathways. And they talked about that, you know, as they're creating those things, most educators are coming and saying, look, we want to be able to do this, but in order to be able to do that pathway, we've got to build partnerships and certification internally and externally. So, it's, I really compliment you. It's a really complicated thing, listening to them do it. And if you build it and you don't have the infrastructure set up and large corporations have that ability to do that, where they can do it much more easily than smaller corporations.
And we're so fortunate that we've been aggressive with technology because of building relationships in virtually.
Right.
With even sometimes other states where our kids can get things. But it, it, you're right, it's very difficult, but it's very exciting. It's kind of energizing, to be honest with you, because it forces you, it forces us as teachers and administrators to think outside of the box, to make that work. But you're exactly right, that, that if you are not a visionary in this climate, you're going to see small schools, systems, even though we don't consider ourselves small in this area, small school systems like, like us not become, not be very successful in this process.
Well, that was one aspect. I, I didn't even consider the coaching part of it. You know, really the after-hour and the involvement that teachers might need to have. And that's where, I agree with you, the technology may come into place if that can assist you in your monitoring as much as anything, just really having those devices out there in those kids' hands. That's very, very interesting.
Yeah, one of the sessions I attended at the state conference, just to commend the board and, and, on this regard, is, it was presented by Pike High School. And they had been awarded a huge grant. And I can't remember exactly what, specifically what the curriculum opportunities it created. But what the grant allowed them to do was purchase laptops. And now, one-third of Pike High School has laptops. And I thought to myself, we have laptops for every student, grades two or three through twelve. And we have devices for every student, every school through twelve. And like Leslie indicated at the end of her comment, was that those, that technology is a great backup when, when you face those limitations on teacher training and teacher licensing, that you can set up opportunities for students to experience some of those educational experiences online or digitally through technology. So, I commend the board for your commitment and your foresight to see that that's, that's the future. And our kids have the best devices that can be had and are in a better situation. And our staff's in a better situation technologically than any district our size around.
Step ahead.
So, I commend you for that.
It always kind of amazes me that we, in some ways, I think we're way ahead of what a lot of people. We go down and listen to people talk to us, they're not even doing what we're doing. That's what amazes me, that we don't ever get a chance to put on a presentation. They go, I think we, we got in late.
We talked, we talked about that before.
Yeah, you know, so.
Well, we do get invited to do a lot of presentations. But when you do presentation, it takes away from what you're doing in your school system. But we are this close to providing workshops for other school systems where they can pay to come to listen to our, our knowledge and our organization, which helps build our fund.
Get that, get that curriculum marketed, you betcha.
For that professional development. And the other thing it does too is that we have sent some teachers out and some administrators to do some presenting at conferences that we think the networking will help bring it back to us. And we are even kind of creating a marketing plan where we actually can consult in areas. And our philosophy is it's Mississinawal Community Schools. And then when they come in, then we will pay that presenter. So, teachers actually have a way in the summer to make extra money. And we make extra money in helping our professional development, our technology plan. So, I think you're going to be really proud of the work that's being done with our staff right now. And I'll end with one thing because as you can tell, I'd love to talk about it. The other part that this philosophy brings is thinking outside the box on accelerating talented students. We believe that it's good that we share teachers from buildings to buildings sometimes. For the first time, we have a seventh grader taking AP Computer Science at, at the high school. And it's exciting because this is, this student's niche. And everything else may not be, but this pathway of computer science may open unbelievable doors for that student.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Anything else? All right, we will move on. Item two oh five, grants, donations, corporate sponsors. Mr. McKenzie.
Yes, we have the following grant donations and corporate sponsors for your consideration this evening. Westview and out, at the Outdoor Habitat received a ten thousand dollar grant from the community foundation. And I want to commend Mrs. Winter, Mrs. Lockwood, and Mrs. Gassar for their work in that area. Boomerang Backpacks received one thousand four hundred dollars in donations. And the following are, are corporate sponsors. Ole Miss, Ole Miss Youth Sports in the amount of one thousand dollars. Raymond James in the amount of one thousand five hundred dollars. Jackson Dairy Farm in the amount of six hundred dollars. Screen Rescue in the amount of one thousand dollars. Central Indiana Ethanol in the amount of one thousand dollars. Stags Flooring in the amount of one thousand dollars. State Farm Insurance in the amount of five hundred dollars. And Fairmount Family Dental in the amount of six hundred dollars. And we would recommend approval of the corporate sponsors as presented this evening.
Thank you, Mr. McKenzie. With the board's pleasure.
Mr. President.
Ms. Miller.
I'll make a motion that we accept the donations, grants, and corporate sponsors as presented.
Motion by Ms. Miller. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Smith. Any comments or discussion? Not hearing any, all those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item two oh six, Claims Against Corporation, Ms. Towne.
Yes, tonight I'm recommending claims totaling two million, three hundred eighty-one thousand, one hundred eighty-four dollars and twenty-four cents, please.
All righty, with the board's pleasure.
Mr. President.
Mr. Cunningham.
I make a motion to approve the claims as presented.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Cunningham and second by Mr. Gaskin. Any comments or discussion regarding claims? All right, all those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item two oh seven, Correspondence and Other Businesses, Mr. McKenzie.
Yes, I would like to make a recommendation after I thought about the installation of the security glass around the doors of, strategically around the doors at the, all four buildings and the security film with those, with that security glass. I would like the board to approve that amount of thirty-eight thousand dollars. I checked with Jill and she says that we have it in capital projects. So, I, I would like.
Just that easy, huh? Just that easy. Just check and check, my dude.
We talked about it a few days ago.
So, I, I would like for the board to approve that since it's that amount of money and we can get started. I mean, e, e, even if you approve it, we can't start tomorrow. It's, it's a process to that sort of thing. So, I would like to see those get installed before Christmas break, if not sooner. So, I would make that recommendation.
How many where, what, what buildings, all buildings?
It's all four buildings.
And it's all, how many, how many building, how many doors?
Uh, I don't know. Do you know how many doors it involves?
Can you get us a, can you just, can we table this and just give us a description of internal, external? I assume all external, but.
Yeah, Mr. Gassar will bring, bring the estimate.
The high school wasn't going to need that much internal.
No, this is just, just, this is just exterior doors.
Oh, just exterior. Oh, I thought you said internal, external, okay.
Just exterior for the time being. So, yeah, we'll, we'll bring that estimate to you for your review.
Appreciate it.
There will be an executive session immediately following tonight's regular meeting. And I think it's gotten out to some of you anyway, if not all of you, that our preschool is being recognized nationally through the National Association for the Education of Young Children. And that's coming up soon. And I'm going to let Mrs. Winter comment on that.
September the twenty-fourth, we have a group of state legislators that are coming to take a tour of the elementary school. And at nine o'clock, the program will be from nine to ten thirty. But at nine o'clock, we're going to have a short program with a presentation of that national recognition. And we would love it if as many of you that you possibly can could be there. I know that right now, we have confirmed, sorry, I, I can't read anything.
So, nine, nine twenty-four, at what time?
Nine AM.
At nine AM. And we will send out a text reminder to you on Sunday and Friday that I, I can't get it to pull up. But we have numerous members of the Senate and the council representative that sit on the education committee going to be here that day. And it would be great to have as many as you, as we possibly can. We also have the East Central Indiana United Way Director coming. We're going to ask Alicia Hazelwood, which leads our Early Childhood Coalition, to speak that day briefly because they're coming to go through the school and the preschool. But we would love to have as many as you there as we possibly can.
We couldn't be prouder of our preschool program. Our, our preschool team worked very hard to put us in a situation where we'd be eligible for this kind of recognition and award. And we appreciate their efforts so much and the administrative team that's worked with them and collaborated with them in this accomplishment. We're up to a hundred and fifty-nine, I was told today, in preschool. That's by, by far the largest preschool enrollment we've ever had. And so, it's, it's kudos to the preschool program. And I think it has a definite effect on, on our, our school district in a very positive way. So, we hope you can make it. It's this Monday, next Monday, at Westview at nine o'clock in the morning. So, in your, in your packet was information on a request to start a cross-country running club for elementary students. I don't think that requires a vote because that person's already on our coaching staff. So, it would just be like a coach getting a camp going for his sport. That particular coach coaches cross-country at the middle school and is a volunteer coach at the high school track, Mr. Jones. And so, I, that's just an informational for you in regard to that cross-country club that we'll be starting up. This is homecoming week. And what's, what's the term they use for the grand poobah of the parade?
Grand marshal.
Grand marshal. The grand marshal is John Dalton this year.
Really?
So, I know John, hearing from Leslie, is very excited that he's a part of our homecoming. And they are also recognizing the nineteen eighty-eight football team that won the sectional that year. So, and I guess Coach Fisher will be back and in that parade with the eighty-eight team. So, I also wanted to comment to the board that we recently experienced the loss of Marcia Ellis. And she was a part of the Mississinawal family for forty-one years. And Marcia was the kind of person that could seem a little bit kajee and grumpy around the exterior sometimes, but she had a, a heart of gold. She retired in two thousand and seven. And every year after she had already retired, I got a Christmas card. Leslie got a Christmas card. Jill got a Christmas card. Dr. Bothwell got a Christmas card. McCourt got a Christmas card. Mike Powell got a Christmas, you know, she.
Ted got one.
Ted got one.
So, and I'm, I'm sure I'm leaving people off the list. But her son told me that she knew the end was coming. And she has a three-year-old great-grandchild. And so, she bought fifteen birthday cards and filled them with money to have a, for her great-grandchild as she grows to be an eighteen-year-old. So, that's the kind of person Marcia was. Not, not a lot of people knew her that way, but that's the kind of person that worked for Mississinawal for forty-one years. She started in nineteen sixty-six. So, blessings to Marcia's family. And just, I wanted to make a public expression of appreciation for Marcia's work and for her character and the kind of person she was. She will be missed in the Mississinawal community. Our next school board meeting will be October first. It will be held at the high school. Say that again. It will be held at the high school cafeteria. It will start at five thirty. And that's a big night for us as a board. We're recognizing school board scholars and some of the great academic achievements of our students from the prior year, from last year. So, that'll start at five thirty in two weeks at the high school cafeteria. That's all I have. Jill or Leslie, do you have anything to add? Any of the administrators have anything to add? Okay, we'll have an executive session after this meeting.
And the board members have anything else to bring up? All right, item two oh eight, motion for adjournment. Summon. Mr. Gaskin and Mrs. Freitas.
Ladies go first, I don't care.
All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And we are adjourned. Thank you.